Just pastor open. If you all stand, we'll have prayer.
Will you bow your heads with me? Dear wise and loving father, first let me say thank you on behalf of all those who are gathered here today. Thank you for your many and abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself. For the measure of health, we need to fulfill our callings for sustenance and for friendship. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of being appropriate responsibility. Thanks as well for the freedom to embrace you and the freedom to reject you. Thank you for loving us even so from your boundless and gracious nature. We pray for the council this morning. We pray that the work being done is done for the benefit of this community, of this county. We pray a blessing upon the leadership and those who are residents here. Anoint this council with your guidance in Jesus' name. Amen.
Call this meeting to order with the name of the council.
Let's rejoice in the fire of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the Israel with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes from June 15?
I'll move to approve the minutes of the last meeting. Second.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes. I have Paul Freed down here first, and I don't see Paul. Is he hiding behind the counter? He's not here yet.
Do you have that 144 step there?
I do not, no, they didn't give it to me.
Okay. We have his phone number calling to get down here.
I can text upstairs.
Okay. In the meantime, we'll go ahead with IT director, Michael King. You want to give your report, please?
Morning. I don't really have anything to get approved or anything. Just wanted to let you know we had another hard drive that failed yesterday. Mike replaced it. So it's going back to what we talked about last time. I do have quotes out to get 10 computers so I can go ahead and at least have someone hand to replace as we need to. The new Barracuda service went in, I believe it was last Tuesday mornings when we switched over. So far, there's not been any problems. It's been seamless. The new system still has to kind of learn our mail to really block better. We're blocking about 10 to 15 percent right now. That could just be the type of mail that's coming in. And it's also, I think, just the Barracuda has to kind of, the new Barracuda has to kind of learn what of our mail is spam and what isn't as, you know, everything's different, set up differently. So other than that, I don't really have anything. I just wanted to make that report and go from there. Any questions or things that I need to look at? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Go home and enjoy the rest of your vacation. Bye. Adrian's not here yet? Yes, he is. He's hiding back over in the corner too.
Just a little thing. I'm hard to see. Good morning, everyone.
He's hiding over there in the dark.
The, we talked about the grant, about signing.
Yes.
I went online when we talked about that and I couldn't get on it. It seems to be backed up again, but I brought a copy to sign. If you would do that, I will send that in.
I'll be happy to sign that.
Okay.
I tried to do it electronically the other day and it wouldn't let me. And then when I called you, you said, "Well, you had hard copy and we can do it the easy way."
That, your signature's right there.
Yeah.
The other thing is the health department's drug response plan. Diana asked me if I would get into that. I've got the footwork done. I need to establish a meeting. Both judges, get Joey Carroll. By the way, I want to give Joey congratulations on dribble over drugs. I think you're doing a great job. This is something, it's a plague in this community and I'm proud to be involved. I've got to assemble a team. Prosecutor's office should be involved also to get that plan together and then deliverables. It's more than just writing a plan. It's an administration. And kind of coming in at the fourth quarter, there's a lot to do. And primarily, all this is going to have to be done after work. So I've got a lot ahead in the next two weeks. I want to get this plan done in that time frame. So I did read where there is quite a bit of money capable of getting in a grant in the very near future. So I want to get this down and make sure that the county is able to get that. So that basically is it. Do you have any questions about that?
No, this is signed. Can you make a copy of it to give to Jane? Or do you already have it?
I've got others if you want, the signature pages. If you can sign my signature page, I can print the rest out and you can keep that one.
Okay.
Adrian and Diana, is Craig going to continue to help with this as well?
Yeah, I think he should.
So we're going to pay, we're going to be paying two people rather than one. Did we have to do a modification to the grant or anything for that? Okay, all right.
Craig is key, is knowledge. He's set up in the essence program. Don't want to interrupt anything there.
Okay.
Want to keep this flowing as best as possible. A little disturbed about all the things that are kind of left hanging out in the air.
It happens.
We just deal with it and go on.
Yeah.
Now that's it?
I appreciate you being willing to take on that.
Well, you know I'm stupid.
You're just anxious having more.
I do think it's important, it'll be an important part of the puzzle for future Fayette County. And I think it's important that we carry it out.
Well, if you look at my two counties, I think, like, I know there's six that are on this program. So they've identified that we are definitely, well, we are in need. And it's, the people we've lost, it's horrible and...
Diana, thank you too for your quick legwork that you've done to keep this active in our transition.
She threatened me, take it or die. So that's it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Dave Rickman? We didn't have you highlighted as being on the agenda, but we had your bids and we were going to talk about you anyway, so...
Well, I wasn't sure if I was on this week or not, so I thought of Barracuda. Yeah, on that gate, you know, that whenever we did it, I asked about it. They said, "Yeah, that'd be big enough," but then it wasn't big enough. So that's why we need to get a bigger gate back there so they can store their equipment back there. 12-foot would work, but I went with like a 14-foot. That way, if they get other equipment that's a little bit bigger, that way we got plenty of room to get in there. I went back with Powers Fencing because they're the ones that put it up.
Yes.
So I thought we'd go back with the same company that we did have. And we'll keep the gates, the old gates. We might use them somewhere else, you know. They're all chain links and all that, you know. And they're out of number nine wire, so they're heavy enough. Just need to know if we can get that old gate and come out with donation if that's all right.
Uh, did you, Dave, did you get a second, any more quotes on doing this?
On that gate?
Yeah.
No, I just, I didn't know. I just went back with the same company that we had.
All right. And that quote was $1,000?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'd make a motion that we approve this to allow Powers Fencing to make some modifications to the fence that he put up recently?
Yes.
Yeah, and for the $1,000 out of the donation fund. I'll second the motion.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Then we got the water heater.
Could you not get a third bid on that?
He's got it.
Yeah, I got three bids in there.
I thought this was a fan. I missed Red. I'm sorry.
Pals Plumbing, I got a bid for them for $1,215. What they're giving is $100 off for taking the old water heater over there because it's still not bad. Then I got K&amp;K Electric, it's $1,451. Then I got MR Improvements. Their bid is $1,220.88. The people on this one used to work for Pals, so that's the only ones I could get up to. I had another one get up, but they didn't send me no bid, no quote or anything on it.
So Pals was the best bid?
I'll move to approve.
Yes, Pals.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes. And then you need to call the gas company and have them come up and do their thing because we'll get rebate because of changing from natural, from propane to natural gas.
Okay, well, we'll get that taken care of. Secondly, another thing is I got, I like to put up a couple more cameras up there. One of them right on the dog park, so in case anything happens, we can have that. And then one on the back side or the other behind the building. So that way we can surveillance all of it there. So no, nothing can happen back in there and we won't know it. But I've talked to Michael and I thought if we get a bigger hard drive, you know, it'd be, because we was a couple days late to record something.
Yeah.
And, but, because I didn't think about it because it didn't happen there at the place, so, you know. So I'm, so me and him talked about it. We don't need a hard drive because if something happens like that, we'll get along to it right away. You know, lesson learned on that part. Hate to say that, but, you know.
Yeah.
Well, with the hard drive and everything, it was going to charge us $1,397.83. But since I talked to Michael, I hadn't went back and seen about taking off the $148 yet for the hard drive, the bigger one, so. I need, I want to get, I'll probably get a different quote for that one without the hard drive. That way, all the, everything will be on paper perky.
So you're going to present that at the next meeting?
Yeah, just let me know what my plan was on that part. And I did something a little different on our waiver papers. Our papers was like this on waivers. And this is what, it's a carbon copy that we have now, like this here. Instead of this part here. That way each of us has a copy of the dog and all that. I like to get approval so we can use the new ones instead of the old ones.
I'd make a motion that we approve the new release waiver and disclosure forms for the animal shelter. I'll second the motion.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes.
Thank you. That's all I have. You have any questions?
Nope. Keep up the good work.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you, thank you. I'm trying.
Dave?
Yes.
I want to reiterate the fact on the dog park because we do have the dog park up there at the animal shelter.
Yes.
And people need to come and register their dogs and they can get the code to get into the gate.
Right.
Because there seemed to be a question about them not being able to get in. The animal shelter was closed, but they can get that
Right.
by showing up and registering their dogs and making sure they're headed shots and everything.
After, after Gary mentioned something, I put it back on our page, on our page itself again. And then I called Michael up to put that on county page itself. And we still advertise on the radio about it, you know.
Okay.
If they wanted to use it, they're welcome to use it anytime, you know. So, thank you.
Just thought we'd better add it to Channel 3 here.
Okay.
It's what we're doing. A lot of people know that that dog park was available and even when the gate's locked, that they can get the combination by being registered and let you guys know.
Yep, that's right. And right here, this pastor right here, been using the, using the dog park up there.
Okay, very good.
Everybody so far, they've used it, they liked it so far, so.
Good. You've got a couple of picnic tables so they can sit and let the dogs run free.
Yeah, yeah. And we got picnic table on each side, small side and big side.
And that's in cooperation with the city. We appreciate them furnishing the picnic tables for us.
And if anybody comes up to adopt a dog, I got the other side with picnic table. They can go out there and inter, interchange with the dog, you know. And if somebody just wants to come up on the hill and wherever they're, I got picnic table out there in front underneath a shade tree. They can have their lunch or whatever they want to do, you know, like that. You know, not strictly, but have a nice time up there, just relaxing and everything. Because I think it's pretty up there whenever we get it all mowed and everything, you know, so.
It is. It's a nice, nice, cool area, good view of the city and interesting place to be.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any mail? We do have old business. We have the contract with the hospital to take over the needle exchange. And I need to place the paperwork. There were some corrections and things. I talked to Mr. White last week. And I need to get with you compliments, see if they can...
Yeah, I'd like to see him.
Those adjustments can be made so that we can get this contract signed and get the needle exchange over to the hospital and let them take care of it.
Okay. Yep.
On the annex, I'm currently working on, continuing to work on getting some bids on the roof project and the painting, the trim of the courthouse and the annex trim. So I've got a guy that's supposed to be coming tomorrow to go over the roof and put together a bid. And I may try to talk to a third person, a third company too, so.
It's awful hard to have three bids when people won't bid on it.
Well, it is. It's been very difficult. Bill, he had trouble getting any more than one bid. So I've kind of taken the whole of the reins to try to get some others. And I do, like I said, I'll, I'll at least have two bids on it, so. And they'll be both locals, so that's what I'm trying to do, is keep them fairly local. Join the counties at least.
That's good.
I did hear from Zabir Court. Judge Freed is wanting to be on the agenda for next meeting. He's not going to make it this morning.
New business, Diana Wright.
I'm just here today to ask for the extension of the stop grant. This is the first time this has ever happened. They didn't get the application out in time for the new grant cycle to start. So they're just extending the old, amending it, giving us an extra $10,000. I just need approval to move forward with that.
Can you explain the stop grant to me, please?
It is...
In short version?
It's through, the stop grant's through the prosecutor's office. And it is part of the duties that the deputy prosecutor does exactly. Colin might be able to expand on that a little bit more.
It's a grant for domestic violence crimes.
Okay. I just couldn't remember.
Yeah.
And you need a motion to sign?
Yes, a motion to sign. It will be signed by the prosecutor and the auditor, actually. You're the only ones that signed this contract.
I'd make a motion that we proceed with the necessary signatures for the stop grant extension. I'll second the motion.
Been moved and seconded to approve the stop grant, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes.
I do have one other question while I'm here about the needle exchange program.
Yes.
And we will be closing out the grants with the county concerning the needle exchange. There's, they were set to expire soon anyway. There's very little money left, but there are some supplies down there. I just want the commissioner's approval. There was things like that Paula had been doing, giving first aid kits to the police departments, the sheriff's department. I'd like to add community corrections to that. And any supplies that will expire, share with Fayette County EMS, the sheriff's department, the police department so that, you know, the Band-Aids, the alcohol wipes and all of that won't expire. So they'll be fine down there in the health department. They'll be able to use that. But to move forward with that part of the program to finish up the supplies that were down there so they're not sitting on things that are going to expire.
Motion to approve. Second.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes.
Thank you.
You said... You were closing out the county?
Right. There was the Greater Indy Foundation grant. It had, I don't have the exact numbers. It had just a little bit of money left in it. What I'll do, I'll finish paying up all the invoices that were, I think there was some on today's agenda to get paid. Once the Greater, the Comer Foundation, the Greater Indy Foundation. And they were all private foundations. There, I think there was three. Get those cleaned out so we can...
If we, if we contract to the hospital to take over the needle exchange program, the commissioners will still be responsible for agreeing or disagreeing to, for this county to continue that program, correct? Or will it be like the senior, the transportation grant? It still runs through commissioners or...
Those, that's however you set that up with the hospital. That's commissioners and hospital board decision. So that's however you all want.
But the state doesn't tell us that we have to make that decision?
They said with a memorandum of understanding, I only sat in on one meeting.
Okay.
So, but the information that was given to us that day, they said the state would agree to go along with whatever guidelines. The only state grant that we have concerning, well, actually, we don't have any state grants because, well, the overdose pilot program, Adrian took over. That's going to finish in August anyway. There was the one, the HIV prevention grant. It was a state grant. And they said they would work that however we wanted to work that. If we wanted to stop with the county, they would restart with the hospital and we wouldn't have to be involved in that money part.
All right.
Or, you know, that's all part of the agreement. I haven't seen the agreement yet. Have you?
Well, I need to see it if there's been corrections and changes.
Okay.
Maybe my question is more towards you then. Statutorily, do, do the commissioners have to approve or disapprove of a needle exchange program in their counties, each county?
No, I don't think so. Well, actually, I have to check.
Because I thought originally the state...
There isn't, there isn't any real statutes in regards to needle exchanges. It's kind of uncharted territory, so I would have, I would have to check. And there may not even be any law out there on that.
Okay. Could you...
Yeah, I can do that.
Investigate into that?
But you think it's okay to go ahead and disperse like Paula was anyway with the expirable?
I'd accept a motion to...
Well, I think we did.
Disperse of all that.
Didn't we, Stephanie? Isn't that last motion was to approve that dispersal?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The letter to the city. We had asked Jane to send them a letter sometime back to notify them that we wanted to sit and renegotiate the agreements with the city on the EMS and the 911 contracts.
Yes.
And I think she's got it for us today to officially vote on and sign for the signature.
Yes.
And I'd make that motion that we do sign and send that letter. I'll second the motion.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Approval of claims of payroll.
I'm going to accept the pay, the payroll and claims, second.
Been moved and seconded to approve payroll and claims, all in favor, say aye. Three ayes. We'll sign paperwork. Then we turn the meeting. Some kind of square there.
Yeah, expression. We got a new package. Yeah, because if we lose this back page, she's only got one signature. She wanted to have a camper when she got back from vacation, didn't she? I don't think she's very happy camper anyway after yesterday. I doubt that she got a little nail. I told her, I said, "That's your fault. You checked your email." You should, you should send it. Respond to her by this. Got you.
She could do a daddy job and do this one too.
Oh, okay, that explains it.
She can't run around the city too.
Looks like she's up for the drive. Looks like she's wanting to try. Hate that when it happens. Yeah, right in the middle of the signature, too. Now, let me get this one. Oh, that's the forward one. Colin, you feel that we ought to get another appraisal? He's not interested in getting out. The owner?
I don't know if he knows anybody. I'm not sure if he did. He'd want to.
I'm not sure we know anybody else either.
I, what I can do is I can call him and let him know that. If he can find one, that's a good point, just because we need, we don't know who else to go to. And if he finds one, don't let me know. All of you guys know as soon as he does, and in the meantime, we'll, if I want to.
Okay.
If he wants another one, I think we ought to have to pay for it.
It depends on how, I mean, there again, it depends on how bad it works. It'd be a problem, I think.
Yeah, it does.
You said everything? I think so. You said that everything is signed?
Yeah.
I'll move to adjourn. Second.
Ben moved in second to adjourn this meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting finished. I can mistress his colleagues.